Suns, Rodney Tishew is going to come and join us.
In your packet is a draft, third amendment, as prepared by our city attorney. Just the highlights of some of that is basically that on the income side, the Suns have agreed to pay 25,000 per year in rent to use the facility for the 2015 and 16 seasons. Just to remind everybody, they already have an agreement with us to be there for the 2014 season. So the rent would be due next March and be 50,000 that would be paid for the 15 and 16 seasons. They would, they've agreed that they would pay for all the utility costs, which is the most significant portion of the operating costs that we have at the stadium. The way the amendment's written is we basically have transferred all the costs of the stadium over onto those, over onto the Suns. At the same time, the amendment also talks about in section five, about naming rights for the field, and it gives them the opportunity to sell naming rights to the field. So it would be such and such field at Municipal Stadium. It's not a naming right on the stadium itself. In reviewing this with the Suns the last few days, the two issues that they've asked us to consider is that we would keep our property insurance on the facility as a landlord. We were planning on doing that anyhow. There's a $10,000 deductible if something catastrophic happened down there. I think the most likely thing that would happen now at the stadium would be a significant flood that would flood the clubhouse. We do have flood insurance there. We would have a $10,000 deductible exposure on that. The Suns have also asked us to consider if we would maintain the building costs themselves, which is a pretty small chunk of our operating costs, maybe something in the range of like $15,000 for mowing the grass outside the facility, just wear and tear on the, or making repairs to the buildings themselves. They've asked us to keep doing that as the landlord, as a typical landlord responsibility. So that's the proposal that's in front of you, and I guess we'll take any questions, or obviously there's representatives of the Suns here, if you have any questions for them.
The lease, the third amendment, is that our proposal or their proposal?
It's our proposal.
Okay. And this proposal does not fit in with what the Suns have requested, is that correct?
Well, I think there are two clarifications, is that we would maintain our property insurance and that we would still cover some of the costs of the building maintenance down there.
And we would pay the deductible. Is that, is that clear or unspecified, unclear?
It's not clear in this document. I think if we want to...
Well, that's the way I read it.
In fact, this document doesn't make us responsible to do anything.
Exactly. This document transfers everything onto them.
Our assumption is, well, our assumption is nothing other than what's in here.
Right.
And the naming rights, how, jumping to that, or do you want to do this in sequence?
Doesn't matter.
Naming rights are, naming rights for the field, so they would be promoting, I don't know, such and such a company field.
Right.
Rather than pick an example, rather than at Municipal Stadium, come to such and such a company field.
Right.
It's not like Orioles Park at Canvin Yards, where they're still not a corporate thing.
Right. So I would envision there'd be some signs on the inside of the stadium, or at least on the grandstand that would say what you just said.
But all their promotional things would most likely be, you know, just because they'd be getting paid.
Sure.
They would say, come to that location.
Such and such field at Municipal Stadium, yeah.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we could, go ahead, Martin.
And why would, why would we do that when they're leaving? I mean, they're, they've told us they're leaving, they're going out of Dodge, but they get naming rights for the field, totally confusing people as to what's going on.
Well, my only answer to that would be, since we're transferring some of the costs of the maintenance, especially the utilities, that would be some way for them to recoup that.
Again, a team that's leaving.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question about, if, it says Suns will not interfere with the city recruiting a replacement team. That's the last bullet. But it seems to me, if we're committing the field for three years, that interferes with, and again, Rodney, I'm trying to put you on the spot, I'm just raising the point. It seems to me that interferes with recruiting a replacement team.
Because of the rules of minor league baseball, no affiliated team would be able to move in until the Suns vacate Municipal Stadium anyway. I think that's the, that's ultimately the bottom line for any of this.
Well, until the Suns vacate.
Right.
So they're leaving town, but they have control over how long they stay? I mean, it seems to me the lease expires in 2014. I mean, that's when the lease expires.
Right, and they're asking for a two-year extension where they would pay rent.
So in effect, you're saying that they do control, they will interfere with recruiting a replacement team, because our, the contract extends through 2016.
But they could vacate it prior to the end of the extended contract, which would allow us to be able to move forward with recruiting a new team to come forward.
Seems to me that people that we need not to interfere is Frederick Keys, which I know is not part of this, but that seems to me that's more important than...
Well, I think in terms of naming rights, it sets a good precedent for that being a selling point in the future, if we're trying to get a new team to come. That's one more revenue generating tool that the team and the city both have at their disposal.
I agree.
That previously was not being asserted or used, and, you know, in terms of being able to get rent for something that we've been only receiving a dollar for theoretically.
So if the Suns get a company, that would be an exhibition that there's local support? Is that the point?
Well, yeah, and I think it also serves as a baseline, if you will, for future demand for that, either that facility or a new one, if we were ever to get to the point where we can finance one, that these are the tools and the means that we've used, you know, like I said, to set a precedent, that we can use to attract a new team.
I think, I agree with you. Mayor naming rights, I think are reasonable, responsible. We've missed out, the Suns have missed out, we've missed out on that opportunity for a long time. But this would be a good place to start.
Go ahead, Mr. Alshire.
Under point number four, non-interference, and I'm not saying I'm agreeing with any of these points, but I'm just noting some potential changes in language for the majority that may choose to vote in favor of this. It says, "And enter into an agreement with an affiliated professional baseball organization." For those of this body that appear to be interested in courting another professional baseball team to this stadium or the city, I'm not certain the term affiliated, whether that's specific to minor league baseball, or I know folks have been talking to folks in the independent league, but I'm not sure if you want, I'm not sure you want that term in there.
I agree. I think you just said, with a professional baseball organization.
The other is, in that same sentence, it says to relocate. Again, I don't know what, you know, discussions are being held with other entities, you know, but if there's a startup team, I'm assuming you don't want it to specify only a team that's relocating?
Yep, just say to play.
How about just any other baseball organization?
To play in Hagerstown.
Playing Hagerstown, I don't even want the word professional in there. Who knows how that could be interpreted?
I agree.
Any other, that's a good point, Kristen.
And I don't understand, within a lease we're negotiating with an entity for a facility the city owns within the city of Hagerstown, why we would include Washington County. It seems if somebody's going to come to play in Washington County outside of the city of Hagerstown, we likely wouldn't have a lot to do with it. I'm assuming nor opposition. So those are a couple of points. And under article three, while we are relieving ourselves of the obligation for utilities, systems, and maintenance, I'm assuming that there is language within the existing agreement where the Suns retains the right, when it quote-unquote rents the facility, to other user groups for events. I'm assuming if it doesn't already, as part of the process of recouping the cost, it's going to pass some of those costs on to that user group. I don't know how that's worked in the past, specifically, but I can, you know, I think I can assume safely that, you've got to assume, you know, a new $100,000 worth of costs, you know, events that you may have provided the opportunity for other groups within the community to use it at a certain rate before, may change. And I think this body needs to be cognizant of that, given the fact that it's, we own the property, we own the facilities. And as it relates to the points in your memo, I would only note for me, I'm opposed to number four, which is this provision that they're going to pay 50 grand in March of 2015. I for one am not interested in this agreement going beyond December of 2015. That assures the club two playing seasons. I don't know why we're going into 2016, nor do I understand why we're waiting for the 50 grand in March of 2015. If they're using the field this year, it should be 25,000 this year. March of next year, it should be another 25,000.
Yeah.
But I'm not interested in an agreement that extends through December 2016.
They do have a lease, though, for this year already in place, right? Just wanted to make sure you understood.
With no rent.
Right.
What dollar rent?
All right. And then...
That's, no, go ahead, Kristen, I don't mean to interrupt, Kristen.
Point number five, this 90-day termination clause valid with the mutual consent of both parties. We didn't, as a body, if I understand, request that that clause be placed in the existing agreement. I don't know why, and I say it again, as the owner of the facility, why we would entertain removing it or granting it mutual standing at this point, especially for an entity that may or may not be here a season, or two seasons, or three seasons from now. I think that, given that unknown, we need to retain that.
Okay. And if I may, just to be clear on that one, the second amendment actually made a 90-day termination for either party without the mutual part in there.
That's right.
So if we want to just leave it...
Without the term mutual.
Then that would stay that way.
And the only way I would consider that change, and this is just me, but the only way I would consider that change is if it was only limited to 2015. And then the last point...
The mutual part?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
The last point, Suns will not interfere with the city recruiting a replacement team. Again, I'm opposed to that, just on the general principle that I'm not interested in recruiting a replacement team, so to me, that isn't some benefit that I think we're getting out of this.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm willing to make a proposal here. Discuss a proposal?
Please, share.
I'm willing to make one. If we extend, there's a lot of things here that's caught a grind on me. One of them's the naming rights, and the other is the 2016. But I guess, I would like to say, let's do this for 2014, mutual consent, let's make this lease apply for 2014, make it clear that we'll pay for the property insurance, but they'll pay for a $10,000 deductible, should that become necessary, and we will consent to the naming rights, but we'll do, you know, have this, this agreement where they pay the expenses for three years, 2014 through 2016.
About the naming rights, again?
I will go along with the naming rights, but 2014 will be under these terms, not the current terms. And they're leaving, we're being very gracious and generous about it, but, so let's, let's pay the expenses starting now, and then, then I can consent to 2016 with mutual consent of both parties. I kind of insulted by them saying they won't interfere with recruiting a replacement team, since they're getting out of Dodge. I think, there's a lot of things in here that grind on me, that's another one. But, but with the modifications that Kristen suggested there, I think, I guess we're in better shape on number four, non-interference, because that's where that comes from, right? So I would suggest those, those, I don't care whether it's this Hagerstown or Washington County, you might as well leave that in, I don't think that hurts. But, you know, that's where I would go, and that's what I would propose, we propose to them, since we're negotiating in public.
Maybe I misunderstood. Am I not, and it probably was written black and white, sometimes you read things in your brain, see something that your eyes don't see. Am I not understanding, the Suns are talking about changing this effective next season, not this season?
Mm-hmm.
That wasn't my understanding.
This was for 15 and 16?
15 and 16.
15 and 16.
We have an agreement that goes through the 2014 season.
Yeah, but they want to change in 2014 lease, don't they?
No, they're saying...
Say they're okay with a 90-day kickout clause for this year?
For 2014, but we pay all the expenses and all that. What I'm saying is, we do this, they pay the expenses, you're getting out of Dodge, we're being nice, letting them use the field, they can do naming rights.
I totally misunderstood. I, now, I just need to hear this, so somebody tell me something. We're talking about 2015? I thought we were here because Major League Baseball said that it was unacceptable for them to have a lease that would not ensure them that they would have a place to play this year.
They already got the player contract extension for this year. That's an email you sent us four months ago, right?
So what's the big issue around...
No, I think the issue is their uncertainty of the future of 2015 and 16, whether or not they're...
Because right now, I assume they're going to the Nationals, asking for their player contract extension now, for 15 and 16, just like we got the email that 14 was extended, you know, like when this time lasted.
But so, so the 90-day clause isn't the problem that I thought it was. I thought that was the problem they had.
Well, they want to, as I understand it, they want to change that to mutual consent.
Which isn't a, for this year?
For 15.
For 15.
I understood all these terms to be for 15.
15 and 16.
And 16 kind of grinds on me.
But let's, let's have a clear understanding, though. That changes it for this year. Everybody agree with that?
It changes what now?
Changes our 90-day kickout clause that we have this year, for this year.
Well, if we're going to do it for 15 and 16, I mean...
If you're giving them a lease for 15 and 16, you are by definition saying...
Yeah. If we, if you leave the mutual consent thing in there.
Right. And so what I'm saying, I, I'm sorry, it doesn't seem to be such a pressing issue if we're not even talking about it until the 2015 season. I mean, it becomes like, and that's why I was so confused about this.
I think it's a pressing issue for them, so they can plan. I would say that's...
Yeah, because they want to get everything locked in.
They want to get it locked in, and what I'm saying is, okay, let's, let's get rid of the expenses for 2014.
Well, that's what I, that's my concern. It seems to me that if we're talking about changing the 2014 lease, which we are, that I think we should make all this...
They've already signed to...
No, this proposal's a 2015 lease. I'm making the proposal.
I am saying that right now, we have the right to tell the Suns that 91 days from now, they don't have a lease. Right?
And a lot of cities would.
Well, we have that right, right now.
Correct.
A lot of cities would do that.
Now, I want somebody to say that if we now say that we're extending this lease to 15 and 16, that somebody would say that we still had the right to tell them right now that they had 91 days to move out, and yeah, they haven't extended the lease for 2015 and 2016. I don't think we can do that.
Oh, I don't think so either. That's a good point.
Which means that we're changing the 2014 lease. And my answer is, if you want to change the 2014 lease, let's talk about 2014. If you want to talk about 2015 and 2016, we've got other things to do tonight, and we can come back and talk about that down the road. That's my answer. I'm willing to do just what, just what Rodney has, but I want it effective 2014.
Well, I want a 2014...
So that goes back to what Mr. Brubaker suggested, which was...
I'll do it for 2014, 15, and 16, but I want it effective for 2014.
But that's what I just said, Lou.
Okay.
I think that's what I just said.
I thought you only wanted for one year.
But you're, no, he's kicking, no, Marty was kicking out 16, 2016.
No, I wasn't. I said 15 and...
I told you your word, too.
I said 15 and 16, provided that they pay, that they do this...
14. I concur.
And that the property, that they pay the deductible, should there be a catastrophic event, and if we keep the deductible at 10,000, if that's what it is, Rodney?
Correct.
But we pay for the property insurance, okay, because it's part of our total package of our facilities.
I have no problem with that at all.
But we write that in there, if in case that happens, because we want to be, we want to be held, we don't want to be exposed to expenses for the stadium for a property that's getting out of Dodge.
Let me summarize, please. So what I'm hearing is, according to the memo that outlines what is in the current proposed lease extension, there's no, no majority that supports what's being proposed by, by staff in the memo.
Well, I think staff is just presenting it, I don't...
Right. But I don't, I don't sense a majority supports what's being proposed. So, given that, let's move on to the proposal by Mr. Brubaker. Well, first of all, I want to go back to something else, which was the building costs, $15,000. Is that a...
Oh, I forgot about that.
Is that a non-starter? Are we not considering that? Because what I hear people saying now is that we want to look at 2014, make all these terms to change the lease that we currently have with them for this season, okay the naming rights, and also for the city to renew insurance, but have the team pay the deductible if there's anything catastrophic that happens.
I wouldn't have a problem with us having the responsibility, 15.
What are the building costs again, Rodney? The stuff outside the stadium?
Yeah, like, what I was looking at was like mowing outside the stadium, and then we budget $10,000 for maintenance repairs to building for trade items like heat, plumbing, electrical. Yeah, we budget for like if a window gets broken, or something like that.
Up to 15.
Up to 15.
Yeah, up to 15. Up to 15.
Let me clarify one more thing.
If, I'm worried that we'll get stuck with a major expense.
No, up to 15, and that way we're okay.
Does that do it? Does that work?
Talking about operating costs.
Up to 15.
Yeah.
Beyond that, it's not ours.
Yeah.
We'll spend 15 on the grounds, but if something major happens and they want to keep playing, you know, I guess property insurance.
Well, I think that's when the property insurance should kick in.
Property insurance should cover that.
Something major, let's say a flood.
Right.
I think our property insurance would...
Well, does it cover, like, the light tower falls?
Yeah, that was mostly covered by insurance, except for the deductible.
Yeah, okay.
So then the other issue is, if we're, the proposal is to change the current 2014 season lease, and we're saying that the rent would be applicable to that, too? Is that the sense that I'm getting?
Yes, all the terms. And may I make another suggestion that is probably the one that I would want to see more than anything? Let's please have not a third amendment to a lease agreement. Let's have a brand-new lease. Let's not have trying to read through an original lease, then go with the first amendment, and go to the second amendment, and look at the third amendment. Make this a brand-new lease, so it's not amendments to leases, so we can just look at the whole lease instead of going back.
Three-year lease. Three-year lease.
Mm-hmm. And I don't have any problem with the field naming rights here.
That way, we're not sticking it on the taxpayers.
Right.
So what I'm hearing is that we will go back to the Suns with this proposal. We have to try to wrap this up, I'm assuming, before their season starts in April, so this will have to be some fast turnaround by the, on the part of staff.
Right, but they have a 2014 lease, so I mean, if they, it's not a fast turnaround for us, if they just want to keep the same lease, then we can discuss 2015 and 16 down the road.
Sure.
But we can resolve it all with this.
Rodney, go ahead.
So if the team doesn't want to renegotiate 2014...
No, then we deal with 15 and 16 later, and we'll put in a work session and discuss it.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know what else is going to change in terms of a proposal. I mean, what's on the table is what's on the table. I mean, you could say, well, we don't want to go through 2016, or we can approve it for just one year, but I don't know what would change in terms of...
Well, what I've proposed is bring in 14, but give them through 16, which is what they're asking for, you know?
Well, when you say proposals, you know, let's keep in mind that we also have a word on these demands. You know, the Suns can tell us all day long that they don't want to pay us anything for the 14, and we can tell them to go find another place to play. Simple. Not simple. I mean, they're actually asking us to pay them to play this year. I find that offensive. They're asking us to pay them to play here, while at the same time asking us to give them field naming rights. I find that offensive. So I mean, if they don't want to renegotiate 2014, we'll talk about 2015 and 16 when we're ready to talk about 2015 and 16.
Or not.
Or not. I mean, I'm not in any hurry to talk about 2015 and 16, if their answer is they don't want to renegotiate 14. They're the ones who came in and said they wanted, that they didn't like this 90-day kickout clause. That's what I recommend, recollect everybody who was talking about mutuality, and they might have a secure place, and they're living under the 2014, so we can figure out later what we want to do.
Any other thoughts, feedback, Don?
Well, the thought that I have is, there are a lot of baseball fans out there that still appreciate the fact that the Suns are going to be around for a while, and I think we need to make this as easy as we can in terms of keeping, at least keeping the fans happy. There's going to be thousands of them, tens of thousands of them.
At least hundreds of them.
Yeah, but, Don, I'm saying, give them the naming rights this year, you know, and all that, they can have...
Yeah, I'm willing to...
I don't have a problem with that.
I'm willing, they're asking, I'm assuming they're asking for naming rights this year.
They're saying these are good terms.
But I'm assuming they're asking for naming rights this year.
Well, well, if it's this year, then the only way I can agree to it is if we do the whole thing.
Marty, what else do you want to change in the present contract?
No, no, I don't want to change it. I want to redo the contract. I agree with Lou.
Okay, but besides naming rights, what else do you...
All of this stuff.
Rent.
What specifically do you want to change?
I want all the stuff. I want them to pay the rent, the same agreements that they just proposed for 15 and 16, only I want to clarify that on the, if the, if property insurance goes into effect, they pay the $10,000 deductible, and that I, we agreed, since it's outside the stadium, to do the miscellaneous stuff up to $15,000.
Okay. So you're not asking for anything they haven't essentially offered to do?
No, I'm saying the same offer, even mutual consent, you know?
Insurance deductible, that's the only...
And it'll be an extra $25,000.
And they can apply a year earlier.
They can apply a year earlier.
It'd be an extra $25,000.
Well, if it's a good deal for 15 and 16, it's a good deal for 14, and the taxpayers aren't on the hook. I mean, yes, we have to consider the fans, but...
Consider the taxpayers, too. It seems to me, though, let me just say this, if we do this, we do have some responsibility to take care of the stadium.
Absolutely.
We own it.
And we're agreeable to it.
And we do not want it to become a slum.
We just agreed to that. We agreed up to 15,000 in maintenance, we keep insurance, so that disaster... We keep the property insurance?
Yeah.
But I don't say, I think that we can...
So if you're talking, but Don, if you're talking about what they, what they do, okay, we're supposed to be correcting what they do? No, I think that...
No, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about...
That's fine.
I'm talking about when the, when a car drives off of Cleveland Avenue and goes through the fence.
Right.
Oh, good.
We have property insurance.
That's property insurance, that's us.
And meanwhile, the bottom line is, just so we all understand, as I understand it, while there's a lot of benefits that the Suns have, and we all know that, I've been the first one to talk about all of them, most of them to the city taxpayer are indirect. The money that goes to the hotels, the motels, the businesses in town, but unfortunately, all that indirect money, none of it ends up, other than the amusement taxes, comes in cash to us. And meanwhile, under the lease we have now, approximately, how much do we pay out a year?
About, that's right here.
This is all expenses, not just the...
69,000. $69,000.
So we're being asked this year to pay approximately $70,000 on behalf of the Hagerstown Suns, so they will play here while at the same time they may declare they're leaving. And my answer is 2014. Make it effective 2014.
I thought, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I thought I was clear in my proposal.
I thought you were just making it for one year, 2014.
Mr. DeBura.
Thank you.
Welcome to the table.
Thank you.
Hey, Tony, is the mic, wait.
Is this one?
Yeah.
That one should work.
Good afternoon. The first thing that we need to remember is that the Hagerstown Suns and the City of Hagerstown are a partnership. We each have benefits. We're not enemies. And no one's doing anybody else a favor by being here. And so, in that spirit, I suggest that we move forward.
With all due respect, I suggest that the city is doing the Hagerstown Suns a huge favor by saying you have a place to play this year. And unless you're going to just tell me that you have another place right now to play and we're just a bystander, I mean.
We have, with all due respect, Mr. Councilman, we have another place to play in 2015.
I'm talking about 2014.
And if we're forced to do, well, we have a lease for 20, we have a contract for 2014.
With a 90-day kickout clause, by us terminable at our will, which means no, you don't.
Well, let's hear what Tony's, are you saying we're being unfair? I think we're being.
Yeah.
Why?
Well, let's not, what we want to do for 2015 and 2016 is to extend the current terms of the lease with the, with the changes that Mr. Tissue pointed out. And the most likely scenario is that we probably won't be here more than one year. So there's a $50,000, we're putting $50,000 up front.
So you're saying.
But we have to do this.
So you're saying, let's say we do have a prospect, and let's say we find a way to meet what that prospect needs for 2016. We say, sorry, we can't do it because we don't know whether the Suns will be there or not. Same with 2015, actually. So we don't know, we just don't know, so we can't really make you any concern or promises?
2015 is the concern of mine. He just said, okay, we actually do have a place that we can go in 2015. So then does that also, if this agreement is signed that you want, and it takes them into 2015, that they also can remove the Suns and go to where they want to go? Okay, I mean, my question is, is that they could put anything out there in that stadium? All right, that's what I want to know.
Anything.
Anything, as in doing a lot of the other stuff that they do. You know, you can, by having the lease itself per se, they were able to do a lot of other things in order to make money. I'm saying if there's not a baseball team there, they could do other venues, could they not?
We don't want to do that.
Well, I know you're saying that, Tony.
We have no interest.
You're saying that, but that's not, you know, that's just something that comes to mind.
We have no interest in that. The contract language can be clarified to do that, to say that. That's fine. So.
What do you think about the proposal to change the current 2014 contract? Make the terms applicable to that, and then have the go-ahead for the naming rights?
That's a nonstarter for the team. We're already budgeted, and the season's about to start for 2014. So we're only interested in the lease extension.
I suggest the adjourn with, I'm not adjourned, but we move on to the next issue, and they have our proposal.
Okay.
I mean, Tony, I respect you, but you're, you know, you're, that's what's on the table right now.
There's clearly not a majority to support what was in front of us on the proposed third amendment to the lease. We've gotten a proposal from a council member that seems to have support of a majority. I'm hearing that it's not going to go anywhere with the Suns, but let's, let's coenoyder outside of this venue, and then we'll come back to the table. Can always discuss it again. All right.
So, I guess last question, then, the naming rights this year, then, is not on the table either?
Not unless it's incorporated with what we've.
Anyone? I mean, I heard Don say he's okay with it, but otherwise, I haven't heard anyone else. The naming rights for this year.
Well, I'm okay with the naming rights provided, it's along with the.
Right, but in terms of no, you know, other caveats.
Without the lease change, is what.
Right, I'm hearing one council member's.
The mayor is getting at, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I don't, I don't hear anything on, on naming rights for this year.
I think I, I heard Lou at one point earlier today say that they probably have the right.
They may very well.
To have naming rights under this lease.
There's a lease there, and it's going to be somebody in ownership, whether they have the right to do that.
Something for the team to consider. Okay, thank you.
So what's the schedule? I mean, certainly they have obligations, Suns have obligations they need to meet, so.
Well, I think there will be conversations, again, outside this venue, and if we have to bring it back to the table next week, we'll bring it back to the table next week.
Okay, okay.
But I would expect by then we'll have an update from staff. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tony.
Something a little more fun coming to the table. No offense, Tony.
Well, I know, but let's.
Hi, Aaron Wolf, Sarah.
Hi. I'd like to switch gears a little bit and say about an exciting opportunity that we have for the community to get more engaged and involved in what we do. Yeah, we're getting ready to roll out a community engagement tool to help us expand our efforts to engage and involve our community members in what we do here at the city. We think that community engagement is central to what we do and central to building a strong and sustainable community. Engaged residents and informed residents build stronger community. And so, they, also, engagement efforts also help us to build ownership and buy-in and facilitate belonging in some of the processes and planning that we do here on a daily basis.
There's also value in letting the community know what we do as their local government. This platform allows us to have a conversation with community members. There's interactive dialogue. So if there's somebody who has a recommendation that they would like to see more flowers downtown, we're able to let them know that their idea was implemented, and they don't have to, you know, wait until they notice it one day. We can even post a photo of some of our Public Works employees planning the flowers downtown. And so they can see that action happening within their community.
And it moves us from simply informing or consulting our community to really fostering involvement and collaboration in, in the work that we do and the plans that we, that we create.
From a messaging standpoint, this also allows us to have more consistent messaging. This would be like our main portal for online, that people could interact with us, and we'd have a more focused, concentrated conversation. So you would have more consistent messaging across the organization and more consistency with that.
So MindMixer is an online platform that allows us to host a conversation focused on ideas, on community building, on practical problem-solving with other members of the community. MindMixer is the host of it, and locally it would be branded as Engage Hagerstown. And it just, it creates one avenue of many for sustained involvement with our community members. It helps us to develop community pride and identity. And by allowing for and asking for feedback and interaction on topics and allowing users to interact with each other and with city staff to be able to tell them when their ideas have been implemented or how we've been able to use the feedback that they've given us. We're looking for actionable and meaningful contributions from our community. To use the site, you need to log in through Facebook, LinkedIn, Google Plus, or email account. So there's no room for anonymity. And it allows us to capture data and demographics on some of our users and be able to discover opportunities for more targeted outreach for underrepresented groups.
And with that, Sarah's going to go over to the laptop, and we are going to walk you through a sample site from another community in Columbia, Maryland. Their site is actually called Imagine Columbia. Inspire Columbia, thank you, Sarah. And again, ours will be Engage Hagerstown. So if you can imagine pulling up our, our site, you'd have a city image as well as our welcome to Engage Hagerstown. And just kind of one greeting that would give you an idea of what you can expect from the site. From there, they list several topics. And again, these things can just ask community input on a wide topic. You can ask like multiple responses. They have a yes/no question here, but you could literally provide a list. There are also opportunities for mapping if you'd like to see change in one particular area of the community. Here they have an exercise for community pride. Post a picture of your favorite place in the winter. And then you have the who's listening, which are the people who are the direct responders within these topics and these conversations. That's their homepage. There's also another topics area where you can see all of the topics. MindMixer recommends that you have two to seven topics listed at one time. Those topics would be decided based on the needs of the organization. And there's also another interesting component with rewards. There are incentives to participate in this conversation. So for example, we're going to go to the Improve SF site, which is for San Francisco. The rewards that we've discussed implementing are, they highlight local places, and they also create relational experiences. So you get a certain amount of points for submitting an idea, for supporting an idea, for posting a photo. You see at the bottom here, you get 50 points just to create an account. And those can fluctuate. So we've talked about some opportunities with rewards through the farmer's market, maybe a cooking class with a local chef. They have here on Improve SF a voicemail, have the mayor record your voicemail greeting. So there's just a variety of different things.
Carl Castle on NPR.
Exactly. Wait, wait, tell me.
Columbia site?
This is San Francisco.
I was going to say, because Columbia doesn't have a mayor, okay.
Yeah. The.
I, we skipped to San Francisco, it's quite different.
These rewards are a little more in line with what we'd like to implement with our site. So it is promoting our community through these reward systems as well. And it is, it's just a very exciting opportunity that we're excited to bring to the community and excited to start receiving feedback. It's interesting and enlightening even to look at other communities' MindMixer sites just to see how their residents and how their members are responding. So we're eager to see what kind of feedback we receive. We'll open it up, then, for any questions or discussion.
I have a couple of questions to tell you, Don. Is there any way to guarantee that this isn't turned into mail call?
We hope with the, with using a Facebook account, LinkedIn, your Google Plus or your email account, there's less room for anonymity, and.
I'm sorry, there is a what?
There's, there's less room for anonymity. You would have to create a legitimate, approved account that, that Facebook, Google Plus, LinkedIn would, would kind of be an extra check in the process.
So anybody, so anybody that contacts MindMixer would have to at least leave an email address?
And we also have the ability, there are filters within the site, or if we think that there is someone who is making several comments under a false alias, we're able to take action with that.
How do you know it's a false alias?
There's ways, Marty. There are ways.
I see lots of acronyms out there, but the few times I venture out, I see lots of names are obviously phony.
IP addresses.
Okay, now, I had several other questions I wanted.
Okay.
Are there any staff requirements to handle this thing? I mean, what, what happens on this end of it? Do we have to empower somebody?
No.
No. Aaron and I will be reviewing responses. We'll schedule that into, into our time and then look at ways that we can implement feedback. And when feedback has been implemented, we'll communicate that either broadly through a photo story or directly to the user whose idea had been implemented.
Okay. How are people going to find out that this is available to them?
We do have like a promotional plan in process. This is linked through our Facebook account, and we currently have over 3,000 fans on our Facebook page. So those people will know about it. We'll obviously have it on the city website and on the front page of the city website. We can also do some targeted marketing and advertising as well.
My final question. When we saw that presentation that Sarah just made with the machine, was that MindMixer?
Yes.
That's what we saw, actually saw?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's the platform?
Yes.
Next. Cost. Man, I hear you saying that it's not going to be any more than a bit of staff time to monitor, just like getting on Facebook, you know, six or 12 times a day and making sure that, you know, M-Tech Assassins hasn't, you know, posted something new. I mean, I use that as a legitimate example because, you know, clearly, there's, there's an entity whom, you know, I don't know the name, but clearly, you know, has posted comments in a public domain in a social media setting with, you know, a little actual, you know, name recognized, accountability to that posting. So I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, beyond you getting, you know, on and checking it, what's the cost?
The cost financially?
Yeah.
Is $7,200 for a three-year period.
That's, that's the MindMixer contract.
Yes.
Sorry, say that again.
It's $7,200 for a three-year period.
Over three years or per year?
Over three years.
Since you're using these third-party social media connections, who determines what material is appropriate to post, to discuss? Who determines who gets kicked off? I mean, these, you know, because, let's face it, if that's you guys or somebody else and Jane Smith and the community, you know, posted something that they felt was, you know, legitimate, and somebody, you know, in this virtual process decided was, was, you know, inappropriate or, you know, and due for removal, staring at my attorney back there who's going to say, you know, there's all kinds of precedent for freedom of speech, for, you know, laws that apply to what you post in the social and virtual networks. So I'm just trying to determine, you know, while we can manage a Facebook account on a site through a third party that we don't own, I get the impression that this type of venue is more, you know, a site that's ours. And so, you know, those questions for me are fairly important.
We actually had a conversation with a community in Arizona that has a MindMixer site. And we addressed some of the negative comments. Particularly, as I said, there's a filter for any specific language that MindMixer would not post that particular comment.
So that's their decision on what language is appropriate, okay?
And then, for example, the person who we spoke with in Arizona had said if there was any questionable content, maybe something that was libelous or slanderous to another person, that comment was removed, and.
At their decision.
And the staff person reposted the content saying this was removed, you know, an idea of what was removed and incorporating the remaining comment.
They also provide a code of conduct for their users on the site that they, the local municipality creates, so.
That's what I'm getting at, is it appears, unlike Facebook, this is a site in which you are creating to manage much more directly than a third-party site you're getting on and, you know, monitoring and, you know, and maybe responding to and putting things up on. I'd be interested to see sort of what liabilities exist from the, you know, website producer and what of those liabilities we are going to assume that we wouldn't otherwise assume through third-party sites like Twitter and Facebook and other, you know, social media networks. So I'm assuming there's some document to that effect. I think the staff will have to get more information about that and get it back to us. The, well, I mean, we're looking to roll this thing out here March 18th, so. The other thing is, while we do become more virtual and more social through that virtual process in communicating with our citizens, I don't want this to be an in lieu of. We need to recognize and understand that more than 16% of our citizens, frankly speaking, are senior generation, many of which do not participate in that manner just as much as we have a significant number of folks in our community that are of a certain income level that don't have the opportunity. income level that don't have the opportunity to participate in that kind of level. So, I don't want these types of, of opportunities in reaching out to serve as an in lieu of the, the more direct level of correspondence that I think many citizens much prefer.
We'll still have citizen comments every fourth Tuesday.
And I think there are opportunities in partnership with the library for them to help, help us promote this particular engine to users of the computers at the library as well.
I appreciate the fact that you've obviously put a lot of work and effort into this and that there's an attempt here to reach out to the citizens of Hagerstown. But let me ask you this. Recently, for some reason, I can't remember circumstances, we got emails from a whole bunch of people who wanted to make English the official language in Maryland. Now, I agree with that. It should be the official Maryland language in Maryland. And I voted for that when William Donald Schaefer was the governor, but he vetoed the bill. And however, if, if you got 5,000 of them or 10,000 of them, how, is that filtered out at, at the MindMixer level or what happens?
The, the goal is to create healthy community conversations with the site. So, if there are hundreds of people who support an effort like that, they would be able to communicate that on the site. I think diverse views is a way that we have healthy conversations and sometimes negative views even is a way that we have healthy conversations. So, we're not looking to, to filter all of that out. We're also looking to, to get additional, more diverse ideas because probably for the people that support that, there are also people in the community who oppose that or who have differing views.
Okay.
And so, MindMixer would serve as kind of an agent for letting us gauge where our community is at on certain issues and ideas. And the goal of the, the goal of MindMixer in general is to have a positive core. So, to be asking for input and ideas on things that are meaningful and actionable but that aren't necessarily, we can use it for polling, we can use it for instant data on things like that, but it's more, what's your big idea for downtown? Or tell us a story about your neighborhood and less about those minute details, although we can use it for that if we would want to.
Okay, but in that particular instance that I mentioned, that, those decisions are made by the General Assembly. They're not made by this council. This council doesn't have the ability to make those decisions legally. And if you continue getting those sorts of things over and over and over again, I don't, that's not...
We'll just choose to ignore them like what happens when I get their emails.
Yeah, but one, what, okay, and I agree.
Getting feedback doesn't mean you have to do anything about it.
Essentially, that's what I did.
Ultimately, we want positive, actionable things.
Then you get your next 5,000 or your next 10,000.
Right.
I think Dawn is asking a reasonable question. What, you know, all but a few, all but a few of those were not from Hagerstown citizens. They were from all over the country. And how, let's rephrase it. How do, how do we keep the site from being abused by people like that and all kinds of other special interests that can bombard and flood your site or give us irrelevant information that they'll say, "My God, they got 5,000 things about this and did nothing about it," even if we can't do anything? We're just asking how the site deals with this. And you don't have to respond tonight if there's not a...
Well, if, if I may, sir. The, the site is designed to ask questions and have people respond to those questions. We will not ask a question whether or not someone wants English as an official language. We would only be asking relevant questions to our, our duties. So, right now, if we had MindMixer up and we have the Urban Partners Project going on, one of the first questions would be, "What is your big idea for downtown?" And if someone posts a response that has absolutely nothing to do with that, I would hope the other viewers would just ignore it, but I believe we have the ability to take those down.
For what reason?
If, if, if it has nothing to do with the conversation and if it's not, not serving the purpose that we've put input out there, I, I would think we would have that ability. The, the whole purpose of this is to engage the community in positive conversation, not, not to get into contest with, with folks, but to hear their thoughts and on relevant matters that pertain to the direction that this body directs staff. So, if we're working on particular projects, we want to hear people's feedback, how we can improve operations. Staff's recommending that we hear from our customers on how we can improve operations.
Okay, can, yeah, before I get a call from Jack, just let me, first off, we're saying Hagerstown, okay? Hagerstown as in Hagerstown citizens. Our zip goes to 21740, goes out wherever. Now, the paper's done it right, honestly. When they are saying now mail call, then they call back and they want to know, "Is this legit?" You're seeing what you're seeing coming in, and I know nothing about this, and I'll be the first one to say, "'Cause Kristin, he, Kristin has really grown because my first thing was Kristin, but I don't do that." And this was back, and so do a lot of other people. And this was back in 2001, okay? My concern is, first off, how can you monitor that? You have, what you're saying is going to be Hagerstown, but from an email, I don't know that you're gonna be able to say, "Yeah, that's happening." I mean, we have somebody that continuously sends in here and is not of Hagerstown, okay? It's every week, every week, every week. And that's my concern because again, okay, you're looking at, and that's not to say that, "Hey, somebody else can't look at this because they'll all be on it, but I'm not gonna look at it." The people who talk to me, call me, they ask for me to come out. And I guess that's part of the older but yet younger as well, okay? And that's my concern. I want it to be able to be monitored, John, and that we're not having, okay, the ones that would like to really make it into a really not good situation. And knowing that, okay, whoever this other party is, and again, I'm not getting this, Kristin, so you can jump in any time, that's my fear. My fear is, is that it may take the wrong avenue. And yeah, you have it in San Francisco, that doesn't tell me much there. And you have it in other places, but you know, I just, I'm a skeptic, okay? And again, I, I just want to know what we really are dealing with, what reality is when this is all said and done.
I think we're way over analyzing this. I think this is a really simple, easy, effective tool...
Well, you like technology.
...to get feedback. I think our communications manager knows what she's doing when it comes to these types of communications outlets. I think staff knows what's in the best interest of our community. I don't think there's gonna be any nefarious attempt to keep voices stifled, all the traditional means of accessing us and communicating with us.
No, I didn't say that. And I didn't say stifled.
No, no, I'm just saying, I think...
I'm seeing the ones that are going to put across, and whether it be negative or positive. They said that. If it is negative, perhaps that would be a good thing, okay? So, you know, but what part of the negative, correct?
When I first saw this MindMixer Community Engagement Platform, I thought it was the '60s retrospective, but...
I don't know what you're talking about.
You don't, you don't remember the '60s, obviously.
I was born in 1977, Marty.
But anyhow, so I, I'm qualified to say that. But, you know, I, I think this appeals to the youth and I think we need that. But I think all the council members have legitimate concerns. So, staff is hearing those concerns and I think, but, but I don't think we're overanalyzing. I think staff is giving them things to look for. We get emails all the time. You know it, Mayor. We get all kinds of crazy stuff. We're saying, "We don't want to hear that stuff. We want a useful, meaningful tool." I have a concern about who, who decides what questions to be asked. So, I, so with all those concerns thrown in, I'm still willing to move forward since it reaches out to youth and, and all that stuff you know about, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I, I agree with you, Mayor, and I would comment, we're already there. I mean, we're already, I'm, I've been sitting here looking at our Facebook page. And I know, you know, "City of Hagerstown, what's your big idea for downtown?" There are 42 comments about big ideas for downtown, and I looked through and down them. Out of those 42, not one of them were sarcastic or ugly or anything of the nature. And this is on a social network that is prone to have that kind of stuff. So, I think this is very effective. I, I think it's Martin's right. I think that everybody's right, that all of these things are always prone to certain abuses and problems, but we need to get with the 21st century and learn how to deal with them. But again, and we're not going to, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I just said, I think we should move forward despite all this.
I, I know, but...
My only point is, if we're not going to go forward with this, we're gonna get rid of the Facebook page and everything else. I think it's a, a positive idea and we should do it. And I'm sorry that my mic wasn't turned on.
All right. We, we must move on now. But thank you. I appreciate staff's consideration of all the concerns here and...
Are we moving on?
So, the clarification is that you put $7,200 in too? Okay, that's correct. We're doing this? That's what you're here for? Or we've already done this?
Is it in there? I think it's out of their current budget, is my understanding. There's no funding request here, yeah. Back to a, a more fun topic, the APFO.
Yes, it's always fun.
Speaking of sarcasm.
Quick and simple topic.
How can you get more fun?
I'm back because we're continuing the discussion on whether to, to continue the 2005 agreement that we have with the county for the APFO and the excise tax. As I outlined last, in November, if we decide to continue with the agreement, we will need to amend our APFO for schools to include the amendments that the county made to their ordinance back in October, which was to include a new fee system in the APFO that gets paid to the county for school CIP projects. If the decision is to discontinue the agreement, then we would need to repeal our APFO and quite possibly the excise tax ordinance that we adopted once we were given the authorization to retain 28%. If we do repeal the APFO, we would still be required to collect the county's excise tax. We just would no longer be allowed to retain 28% of it. However, new residential development and the city could move forward without the impediment of the APFO school test, which would be a competitive advantage over projects outside the city. The reason that we're, as you might say, calling the question on this issue is that times have changed significantly since 2005 when we entered into this agreement, which was at the very height of the residential building boom. And as I mentioned back in November, potential city revenue from the excise tax has been greatly reduced as a result of county rate reductions in recent years. The, for example, on a 2,500 square foot single-family home, we now have the capability of only retaining 20% of the revenue potential that we did in 2005 when it would have been 36,000 or 3,640 per a house that size. Now, it would be $700 per a house that size. So, it's a 20, only 20% for us, yeah. Residential growth levels in the city in the post-bloom era have lagged well behind growth out in the county. And for example, within the last five years, we've done a quarter of the level of residential permit activity in the last five years that we did it three years at the height of the boom. Whereas in the same last five years, outside the city, in the unincorporated area of the county, they have done two and a half times the permit activity that we have done. This is significant because 80% of the schools that serve the city also serve large areas outside of the city. So, a large portion of the growth from the new development affecting our schools comes from development outside the city. So, in November, as you can recall, you had a conversation about this. There were some concerns expressed about continuing the agreement, but we were directed us to meet with our counterparts at the county to find out if there were alternative revenue opportunities for the city to, to justify us continuing this agreement since we entered into the agreement because we were getting this revenue opportunity back in 2005. So, on February 11th, a group of us went over there, the, the mayor, the city administrator, the director of Department of Community Economic Development and myself. We met with the county administrator and commissioner Baker to talk about this issue. They understood where we were coming from. We kicked around whether there were revenue opportunities to be shared with the city. And they indicated if growth were to pick back up again, that they, there could be the potential that they would raise the excise tax rate. Currently, it's at a dollar per square foot, perhaps back up to $3 a square foot. I'm assuming they meant on housing. And then, they also talked about whether or not the city decided to create a tax increment finance district downtown to help pay for catalyst projects, such as we're talking about with Urban Partners doing catalyst projects, that there was the potential that this county might participate so that their increase in property taxes could also be put into the TIF fund to help pay for whatever public infrastructure was created. So, those were the two ideas that were put out there. They, they told us that they did not, we're not aware of any other revenue sharing opportunity at this time that could be made between the city and the county. So, that's, that's the news that we bring back to you from the meeting when we met with the county.
Mr. Brubaker.
Did you discuss this, the way they're now doing the schools and the special fees and the, the special awards that we don't share in? Is that discussed that is a problem?
You mean the mitigation?
The mitigation, things, developers have to build schools or pay fees, but that isn't part of our sharing. Did you discuss whether there was a way for us to share?
We talked about the fact that the revenue had been reduced. We didn't get into a debate about appropriateness of decisions that have been made, just the fact that it's now different, a different picture for the city.
So, you didn't communicate how that takes away from us indirectly? Indirectly, that, that takes away from us. Instead of, the whole idea of public facility fees is to pay for public facilities. And they've lowered those, but at the same time, they've gone to these special arrangements which I think are very questionable, actually. They're like proffers in Virginia, really. And, and, so that wasn't discussed. That's my first question. Okay. Second question. Have we ever resolved whether it's possible in Maryland for municipalities to charge at a public facility fees?
You mean impact fees or excise tax fees?
Either one.
We could do, we could do an A, an impact fee. We have the authorization for that. For an excise tax, we would need the, the legislature to authorize us to do that.
We could charge an impact fee if we decided the development had undue impact on, well, we'd have to put it, have standards, I know, so it was.
Right. And do a full analysis that we felt that there was significant growth levels to justify that fee.
For our things, roads and so forth. But we could, we can do impact fees.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions, Marty?
No, those are, those are my questions.
Kristin? First, let me just say, I think that your staff recommendation couldn't say it any better than any of us. I mean, I think it's spot on as it relates to the predicament in which we find ourselves as a municipality attempting to, to remain consistent with a county ordinance that has changed significantly, almost on an annual basis since the time of inception of the municipalities adopting it. And, and so I think it brings in, into play that, that root question of, you know, given the most recent changes, you know, does it make sense at this point to even consider to sort of, you know, when is that last straw? And, and, you know, for me, just a couple of points. The first is, you know, as Marty points out, you know, these excise taxes are associated with the impact of new growth and the infrastructure necessary in a timing venue. However, if you look at the county's expense as it relates to schools, over the last several years, you'll find that maintenance of effort is what the county has sort of, you know, obligated itself to meet and not much more than that. So, if you're mitigating development but not providing anything greatly above that maintenance of effort, you know, and, and then you're, you're doing so in a manner that, that doesn't allow that municipality to participate, it's hard to argue, "Hey, municipality, you still have to do that because there is a level of service we need to meet or expectation we need to meet above that maintenance of effort." And that's just one particular item. A lot of folks don't realize that the county APFO includes more than just schools. I mean, it includes water and sewer and, and roads and public safety, i.e. those volunteer fire companies that a lot of folks talk about from time to time.
So, you're for discontinuing the agreement?
Yeah.
Is what I'm hearing you say.
And, yeah. And then, another point that, that I think is missed and you allude to it in the fact that, you know, out of 100% of growth, about 75% has, has occurred in this county outside of the municipalities. If I'm not mistaken, I believe minor subdivision is still not subject to that APFO process. So, when I drive out Beaver Creek Road on the right side leaving Fungstown, you see these houses pop up and they got an individual driveway, you know, every, every tenth of a mile. That stuff has no impact. It's not, it's not under that obligation. And I think that, that I've always had, had an issue, you know, with, with that process. And that's why I say, I think the last straw was this mitigation where the county says, "Hey, just come in and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll establish a number for you and we'll establish a timeframe for you, you know, and it'll apply to your development." That, to me, is, is not the way an APFO was intended to work. That, to me, is not the way an APFO was intended to work, you know, but rather a measure that meets, you know, each developer's specific, you know, goal for development. And if that's the county's approach through an APFO, we might as well scrap the county's approach and do that ourselves.
So one for discontinuing. Marty, are you taking a position on?
Oh, I really tried to hope this could be made to work, but, you know, I think we have a stone's wall with the county on this one. So I'm willing to go it alone at this point. I do have a concern that we're, it's a small revenue now, but if development picks up, we're foregoing that, so we need to really assess.
But don't we need to consider also, I mean, if this truly does give us a competitive advantage?
If it does.
And it redirects some more growth into the city.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that.
You know, then it has economic benefits.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that, but it's still an if.
The juice is not worth the squeeze at this point.
It's still an if. And, and so the county is actually gaining money by this right now, you know. So it's our own internal issue. And, but, but I think they have made it not worth, as you say, not worth the squeeze. So I'll go along with the staff recommendation.
Mr. Munson, what do you say?
The purpose of this obvious is to control growth. And when this stuff was passed out, so the whole conversation, controlling growth, controlling growth, controlling growth. Now, circumstances have changed dramatically, obviously, but at some point, it's going to turn around again because this is too desirable area, a very desirable area in which to live. If we, if we cut the ties now, will some future council be able to go back to controlling growth with the help of the county commissioners? I mean, if you quit it now, can you, can you go back to where we've been for the last several years?
Anything's possible provided the county still has.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Anything is possible provided the county still has that agreement capability in their ordinance as they do now. The likelihood that we would have the level of growth in Hagerstown that we did in 2004 through '06 is pretty, pretty dim. That was unprecedented for the city. Everybody was getting a lot of growth, but for the city to have captured that much growth is pretty unprecedented.
I think so.
Yeah.
But there's nothing that precludes us from going back to our old APFO and saying at 120%. No development can be phased to exceed school capacity at more than 120%. I mean, there's nothing that precludes us because the reality is the state doesn't even begin to consider funding a school expansion or addition or new school system within a service area unless the school's at 110%. So, you know, I don't see anything that precludes us from going back and saying, hey, we're going to put our old APFO back in, into effect.
Not to mention the fact that much of the residential development that we're trying to get to occur in the city center and throughout the city of Hagerstown, especially in downtown, is more for younger people, retired people, usually people without kids. And so that there's, you know, that opportunity to capture that growth, make it more competitive, I think it's, I think we're wise to discontinue the agreement at this point, but I'm not trying to persuade anybody here. I'd like to hear from the rest of the council. How about you, Ms. Nye?
Staff's recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Metzner?
Agreed.
So I'm hearing unanimous consent to discontinue the APFO, the city's APFO.
The city's APFO agreement, yeah.
Right.
Which would require us to repeal the ordinance.
Or enact an alternative one.
Right.
I don't hear any, any movement towards an alternative. I just hear us at this point taking action on the repeal.
I was just trying to address Dawn's concern of.
It answers Dawn. Kristen's answering Dawn's question. We're free to, you know, enact an ordinance or.
So we'll move forward then, we'll get language to repeal the ordinance, I guess even on for the end of this month.
And we do keep track of the growth that's occurring in the city and report out about it to you early in the beginning of each year. So it's a way for us to monitor whether we think things are getting out of control that would require the extraordinary step for us to have an APFO for schools when we don't control schools. And that's the other thing people need to consider. This is an extraordinary thing that we have an APFO for a service we do not provide.
But you can have an APFO for the things we do provide.
Right, yes.
I mean, it doesn't, we don't have to do schools unless we.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but in those years in which this agreement has been in place, the city of Hagerstown has not once waived the requirements of the excise tax to be paid by new development in any given year.
Yeah, we don't have the ability to waive the excise.
I know the county has waived it a number of years during the construction season, which again puts it behind the eight ball in terms of, you know, funding that.
Their incentive program.
Right, the incentive program.
Well, thanks for your work on this. And we'll look forward to then, to end of the month. All right, moving forward on Franklin.
We hope.
We shall.
We shall. That's more positive, I like it.
Yeah, good job.
You're back.
This is a pass. This is yours? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to talk about East Franklin Street and the Gateway area. Staff have studied relevant statistics, looked at our demographics and related documents. And what started as a simple ask to improve street pits, that's how our conversation started months ago, we thought it'd be a good idea to improve street pits, the tree pits along Franklin Street. It's grown from that, and we had to ask ourselves some questions. How do we collectively improve this corridor? How do we make lasting change? We have a population along Franklin Street, and we'll get into the statistics during the presentation, but it's important to note that the average tenancy on Franklin Street is eight months. We have a very transitional population along Franklin Street. Now, we'll recognize, we have some longtime homeowners. We have some businesses along Franklin Street that have been there for 20 years. But we've grown from taking a look at how we can improve street tree pits, and we've grown that into a vision specifically for our eastern gateway. You also hear about project recommendations this evening and funding for those projects. In the current fiscal year, the mayor and council have approved $100,000 from our Economic Development Fund for these types of projects. And that was approved, staff was looking at East Franklin Street corridor. Excuse me one moment. Tonight, you'll hear that the Department of Community and Economic Development is going to adopt East Franklin Street. We're going to talk a little bit more about needing to claim areas as our own. We're also going to talk about public improvements. We're going to talk about private improvements, public-private partnerships. And this is not a simple equation. It's not flowers plus signs equal a gateway. This is a complex algebraic equation that's dealing with the complexities of our social situation, the dynamics with our landlords, the building owners, the commercial possibilities for new businesses to grow along Franklin Street. We'll get into some specifics about public art. And we'll have, I think, a very exciting announcement later in the presentation about a donation from someone in the community towards public art along the East Franklin Street corridor. So we're going to have a video, and we're showing some of our words. We're showing a realistic view of what Franklin Street is and what it can become.
You say it in writing here, but it's, we're talking about from Cannon.
To North Potomac at this point.
Yes, sir. Yes, on East Franklin, from Cannon to North Potomac. Aaron, if you could start the video, please.
A community's gateway largely defines its image. A gateway should be welcoming, vibrant, well-maintained. It should set the tone for what people can expect to see around the community. This is what people currently see when they enter the eastern gateway to our downtown, Franklin Street. And here's an idea of what they'll encounter as they approach the core of our city. We want to create a gateway that is deserving of this community and the downtown neighborhood. We want to welcome people to our city center with greeting signs at the gateway entrance. The target area currently doesn't have any public art, but we want to change that with murals and maybe even some sculpture and interactive art. We want to take down the worn banners and replace them with colorful and artistically designed banners with imagery that relates to the values we hold as a community. We want to keep our sidewalks walkable by installing tree boxes and exploring the option of decorative grates around the street trees. No trespassing and no loitering signage can be modified to better fit within the design of the neighborhood. Through the development of a grant program, we can help property owners install coach or carriage lights to provide additional lighting from dusk to dawn. The city can also work with property owners to renovate and upgrade facades by participating in the city's current enhancement incentive programs.
Staff are suggesting that this is much more than a streetscape project. It is a means of restoring hope in our community and bringing people together for the common good. We appreciate the long-lasting residents and businesses, but we also acknowledge that the average tenancy in the targeted area is slightly more than eight months. The reality of the East Franklin Street corridor requires us to take ownership and to claim this gateway as our own. The East Franklin Street neighborhood has many potential partners, churches, residents, businesses, neighborhood's first groups, nonprofit organizations, and others. To be successful, we must change our approach. Parachuting into an area, completing a project, and leaving is not sustainable. It does not matter if we live along this corridor. It belongs to us collectively. Many in this area are poor and have lost hope. Others who have tried to create change are tired. We have people without hope, and we're surprised when they don't pick up trash or when they act out. And some suggest we simply have people move. Move where? Staff ask that we collectively, as community, work together to give businesses and residents a welcoming, vibrant, and well-maintained gateway. We will connect departments across the city organization, but we are also reaching out, engaging all of our partners, inviting them to join us. To do things as simple as picking up trash, planting flowers, weeding, cleaning, everyone can have a role. We must give our community a place of beauty that we can all take pride in and in turn give people hope.
Thanks everyone for watching that. This intervention has been a long time in coming. The Franklin Street Gateway has been brought up numerous times as a challenge in downtown Hagerstown. Urban Partners has heard about the Franklin Street Gateway at many of their focus groups and interviews. East Franklin Street sets a negative tone and low expectations for visitors and residents as they enter downtown Hagerstown. Revitalizing these three blocks of East Franklin is paramount to the larger revitalization effort. Staff has been doing their homework to establish existing conditions, and here is how we propose to move forward.
And some of the improvements that we're looking to undertake consist of public improvements along the East Franklin Street corridor. Some would be potential public-private partnerships with property owners, and some would also involve long-term sustainable collaboration between potential community partners, residents, neighborhood first groups, and Sarah will touch on that. But just to give you a rundown of some of the projects we are proposing with the funding that's been programmed in the fiscal year 14 economic development budget. As Andrew mentioned, one of the keys, as you enter the gateway at North Cannon, the first impression could be a negative impression. We're proposing a new gateway sign. There's a very rough preliminary mock-up in the bottom corner, but we're proposing to install a new gateway sign on the south section of, likely on the south section of the intersection at Cannon and Franklin Street. That would be also combined with new landscaping at that intersection. We're also proposing public art, and this could range from small sculptures along the areas of Franklin Street to sidewalk art, as you see in the bottom left corner. It could also be similar public art to what we have now, like the butterflies and the air balloon art, the air balloons that were in our downtown. We're also proposing landscaping and also planters, like large urns or planters along East Franklin Street. Could be located at intersections or different areas along East Franklin Street where they're strategically placed not to interfere with the foot traffic. And this would consist of greenery and decorative plantings in these large planters. Also, that was mentioned in the video, banners. Andrew, if you want to talk about the downtown vision for the banners?
Right now, there are 74 banners in the downtown. They all need to be replaced. But, but we'd like to start on Franklin Street. And right now, on Franklin Street, there are 12 banners. We'd like to continue all the way through to Cannon with an additional four banners, making the entire gateway bannered. The banners would be energetically described with graphics and words, some of the exciting attributes of the downtown, like dining, entertainment, education, and also with messages that are reflective of our values.
One other item that was also mentioned in the video presentation was a new grant program. We'd like to create a new grant program that would allow property owners to install carriage or coach lights on the exteriors of their facades. One, this would obviously enhance the appearance of some of these buildings, but the other benefit to that would be, dusk to dawn carriage lights would also provide additional lighting in the area, which is a big community policing through environmental design concept. And property owners could also utilize our existing facade programs. And we do have a, a collection of certain properties because of our funding sources of the existing facade programs. They would not be eligible because of the use of the properties. The existing programs are funded with community development block grant funding and the state community legacy funding. So we're also proposing an additional funding source for those programs to kind of catch the properties that currently are not eligible. We also have funding plans for fiscal year 2015 for things such as street tree box enhancements with the decorative grates, plantings, sidewalk cellar door replacement. A lot of the old sidewalk cellar doors on the sidewalks in our downtown, sometimes they're not in good condition and they don't look, they don't look good, and they're also potentially unsafe. We're also looking in FY15 for a code violation abatement program where we have funding set aside for code violation abatements by the city code administration, planning and code administration office. And some other smaller scale things would be window treatments, window candle lights. Looking at windows, sometimes you see broken blinds, no blinds, bed sheets, towels, something that would maybe provide funding for uniform window treatments. And also, as you saw in the presentation, no, uniform no trespassing signage, something that would fit the character a little bit better than the scattered signs that you see now. And those projects in fiscal year 2015 would be discussed with the mayor and council as we move through the budget process for fiscal year 2015.
All right. So with those, with those initiatives, we also plan a pretty comprehensive outreach program. First, we'd like to have a meeting of all the property owners. City would host that. But we want to tell the property owners about the new programs that Jonathan just outlined, and also reinforce the existence of our existing programs, like the First Third Grant, the Sign of Facade Programs, and the Hagerstown Revolving Loan Program. And we also like to educate them on applicable codes. And we also like to educate them on applicable codes. There are definitely some code violations in those blocks, and we need to crack down on those. But at the same time, we need to reach out to the business owners. There are 20 businesses in the first couple blocks, the first three blocks of East Franklin. And want to reach out to those business owners and encourage them to join the Downtown Alliance, which is a great way to cross-promote your business. It's been a very positive impact. And we also want to tell them about the new and existing programs that we could help, that would help them renovate their business, make them more competitive, be a little bit more attractive to visit, and draw more business that way. It's an interesting makeup of businesses in those first three blocks. They're really neighborhood service businesses. They're not necessarily destination. Nobody's flocking in from the north end to come down on the East Franklin Street right now for any businesses. But they do service the existing neighborhood. And as the residents of the neighborhood are perhaps less transient, the services that are offered on the street directly for those neighbors should also improve. But we'd like to assist that in any way that we can.
Paired with the outreach efforts that Andrew just described, we also have a strategy for neighborhood outreach for targeting some of those 186 residential units and eight homeowners in that block and making sure that we're going door-to-door to engage those residents and offer them an opportunity to engage in planning and cleanup and design of what we do on the street. We're talking about focus groups and door-to-door outreach, integrating them into existing Neighborhood's first groups, outreach to the faith community, and ongoing outreach to the Neighborhood's first group in that area. We also recognize that turnover happens very quickly in these blocks, and so we would do these at sort of each entry point, at each major cleanup, at each big design push. We would again go out and knock on doors and ask residents to engage in the process together with us. We're also, as John mentioned, proposing that DCD staff will begin to adopt those blocks of Franklin that will be regularly doing cleanup and interacting with residents and business owners along the block as we do that, to both build relationship and also demonstrate our commitment to the block and to seeing sustainable change happen there. We really think that the only way to create sustainable and long-term changes in the area is by addressing root causes and by involving the people who live there in the process. So creating ownership of vision and ongoing efforts to continue to engage the community at every entry point.
With that said, the handout that I handed out at the beginning of the presentation, the last page, has a breakdown of sources and uses of the proposed funding sources for these projects. The vast majority of these projects, we are seeking to use funding that's in the approved budget program for these projects in the Economic Redevelopment Fund. And we also have some of the proposed numbers for the fiscal year 2015 budget, which of course we'll be discussing throughout the budget process. But one thing we want to mention tonight with some exciting news to actually help kick off some of our public art initiatives here on Franklin Street. Andrew, do you want to?
Yeah, we actually were able to get, Vincent Groh has donated $15,000 to kick off the public art piece of this project. So he's excited to do that, and we look forward to participating with him on that.
That's great. Congratulations for putting that together. Because I think that portion of this is potentially the most important of all. You could very easily turn that corridor into something very nice with public artwork.
So tonight, we requested the mayor and council that they give us a nod of approval. You give us a nod of approval on the overall concept plan that we've laid out here tonight for enhancing the Franklin Street corridor. Also, we're asking for approval to move forward with a coach and carriage light grant program. What we envision with the coach and carriage light grant program is property owners would be eligible for up to $1,000 for installation of carriage lights. That would likely cover their permit costs, the material costs, and labor costs. Of course, every situation is going to be unique depending on the existing electric in those buildings. If the mayor and council are comfortable with that general concept, we'd come back with a motion during regular session in March. If you'd feel more comfortable coming back at a later work session to discuss that in more detail, we can do that as well. We're also asking the mayor and council to give us approval to target the Franklin Street corridor with our existing programs. The existing CDVG and State Community Legacy facade programs target South Prospect Street, South Potomac, East Antietam, and south areas of, I believe, West Washington Street. We'd like to expand that to Franklin Street. The other areas would still be included. And also, we're asking the mayor and council to approve funding out of the Economic Redevelopment Fund to be utilized for those properties that currently do not meet the eligibility criteria to be eligible for the existing facade programs, and that would be in the amount of $30,000.
It's a very laudable program, and if it works, it's going to do a lot to enhance the city. Let me just ask one question. Most of the traffic that comes along Franklin doesn't turn left at Potomac Street. It keeps going straight. Why didn't you consider the block, at least where the post office is? There are some opportunities there for improvement and possibly better opportunities.
If I can address that, can you give me the mic? Yes, sir. If I could address that question. We, everything we're proposing here can be replicated. And given the resources we have, we believe we can make a serious improvement from Cannon to North Potomac. Our outreach program, we're asking people to join us and to replicate this. And we want to continue this on to West Franklin. We hope through our Main Street program, because this concept is very grassroots, it's going to tie in very nicely when we get the Main Street program up and running. In many ways, we're laying the foundation for that, and we're going to invite people to join us. So the plan is to continue on West Franklin, but then to look at East Washington and West Washington, to look at Antietam, to look at North Potomac and South Potomac, and to claim these streets as ours and to make these types of improvements and to get people involved. I mentioned briefly in the video the concept of parachuting, and right now, that's kind of what happens, and what we're talking about is comprehensive. So I hope that answers your question, sir.
Thank you.
A couple of comments. The first is whether you have done this consciously or not. Clearly, the analysis that you provided, I think, and I like the inference that you used the word equation, because I've used the equation for some time now in this block-by-block approach, that when you look at any block downtown, and I did this because this was on the agenda, I tried to drive extra slow and really take a look. And I think it proves the point I've been saying, is that in any block downtown, you have a couple of basic things. You have generally one or two anchors in every block that people gravitate toward that we need to protect by enhancing its surrounding area. And the other piece of that equation is, in any block, about 20% of the stuff is just junk, just garbage that needs fixed up, and there's no other way to say it than that. There's about 50% in transition that can be either pulled up by the 30% that is generally good or down by the 20% that's bad. And I think that that's the general equation that we have in this block and any block that you take downtown. And your analysis ferrets that out, because it clearly shows eight buildings in this section are vacant. And any one of us who have driven down through there 1,000 times can probably point out at least half of them. And some of the pictures that you showed, I mean, we could point out about half of those specific examples. And that's sort of that 20% of the bad that we just see nonstop within our urban core that, you know, as long as that continues to exist, no matter how much money and how much time and effort we spend on the 50% in transition or the 30% in good standing, that 20% will remain, and that's the image that folks will have in any one of the blocks that we, you know, attempt to make this improvement on. That said, specific to your chart, just my two cents, one is, I like the example of the sign, but I think that that entrance requires a better sign, a more robust sign. And a couple of items, I would move those no trespassing signs to as soon as you can get them. When you drive down that section, I mean, you see those signs, they're glaring. So any ability to do that in '14 instead of '15. The other is the sidewalk cellar door replacement. Just my recommendation or my two cents, but I would flip that with the large planters and decorative planting and landscaping, because I would assume you would do that after you make those grate changes rather than put them in and then come back and change all the grates out in front of these properties. They're the same exact cost. It just seems to me you would do one before, and you would do something on the ground before you did the other one. And I know we're going to talk about this code violation abatement, and I'm much more prepared to talk about that sooner rather than later. And so for me, that moves up to a more immediate timeframe.
And to clarify, we do envision bringing more designs for the gateway sign back to the mayor and council.
Has there been any discussion of additional parking for the residents down there? I mean, if they have to park on the street, that can be a real problem. I mean, you know, Krista just mentioned that a large amount of what there is junk. If you tore it down, it would probably look better than standing there. That sort of thing could be converted into a parking lot that the neighborhood could use.
And I'm sure that's something we can at least discuss with the residents as we move forward with the engagement efforts in that area.
And anytime we get a significant amount of snowfall, I don't know whether we just don't do it or what, but that was another thing I noticed coming down today, is you got a bunch of leftover dirty wet snow from three or four different events, frankly speaking, because, you know, cars, we don't make the cars move for a specific timeframe and get it out of there. I mean, it just, it detracts from the ability for people to park and the appearance in front of the places.
I think public works, once they get everything clear, they go back and try to do some of that cleanup, because I know they work real hard in just keeping the roads clear. Any other feedback, Mr. Brubaker?
Well, just an aside to the tearing down buildings, you've got to be very judicious about that. Too many gaps, it doesn't work very well either in a city. You want a unified facade, and you've got to be real careful about getting a Detroit kind of look, where, you know, there's too many gaps in the cityscape. But that's an aside. I want to commend the staff for their initiative. I think consistently throughout the time I've been in office, and despite the hardships starting in 2008, staff has brought us a lot of initiatives to try to move forward, you know, despite the hardships that affect them as well. So I commend them for that. I drive through here every day. My wife and I have walked these blocks several times, so I'm, you know, familiar with it. But I will say, and this ties into what Don, Councilman Munson, said, and somewhat with several conversations I've had with urban partners, in that if you can get the core, I mean, the core of the core, Washington to, between, and then Washington Franklin and Antietam between Potomac and Jonathan, if you can get that, good stuff done and going, good stuff will radiate outwards. Now, I'm not saying I'm against this, but I wonder, because several times I've said we should take a crisis room mentality to downtown, that we should be looking at it building by building, business by business, contacting them every month, you know, what's going on, what can we do to help, you know, why aren't you implied, and push. And to me, that's what we ought to be doing. It looks to me like we're going to do this kind of stuff only on the edge of what I call the core. I'll go along with it, but, you know, it's, I'd like to see it in the downtown blocks.
I think a lot of effort has been made to do.
Well, and I'm not saying that Steph doesn't work hard at it. I just mean a super focused effort. Our total crisis is in the core, and if we can get that going, especially with some private investment, good things will happen to the neighborhoods around it. So, and I know that John said, we'll try to extend this, and I won't be against it. I will watch and be interested in how this works. And we have to be careful about our financial investment, too, as you know. So if this turns around, it'll pay for itself.
Sure. I know, I saw Lou shake his head, so I know he's all for it.
Long time coming. Congratulations to staff.
And Penny, any feedback?
And John can go back, and he can say how many years I've told him this is what has got to happen, and I'll just be amazed if I don't have to look at toilets setting out on the corner of Cannon.
You sure it wasn't a decorative planter?
No. No.
Should have made it one.
But it has, it has been, and now the end result is going to be maintained.
Good job.
And hoping that, you know, that the residents that are there buy into it.
It sounds like you've got support from the council here, and I agree with the accolades. I think this has been a long time coming. I know that the staff has been studying and preparing for this for a while now. This hasn't just, isn't just something you thought of last week. So thank you for the preparation work and for presenting it tonight. Thanks. For this last item, let me just summarize where we've been, where we're going. So this topic has been on our agenda now for almost four months, probably about that amount of time. We started out with looking at the review of Chapter 95, the excessive use of police services, and the Chapter 197 rental facilities. Where we're at right now is, I think, in terms of the decision points that we made earlier, this would be a few weeks ago, I don't see us moving from those. So at this point, there's still a majority that support keeping code in with the revision of Chapter 95, such that if you have more than three qualifying calls for service that are related to code, you can still be designated a chronic nuisance. We are not moving, though, from the majority position that we still will not publish those names. And then that brings us to a couple of the other issues. The seminar, I do think that there is more than enough support for making a seminar mandatory when there have been at least one felony or more than one qualifying call. So the idea being, we want to make this available to everybody. We want all landlords and property owners to take advantage of the seminar, to educate them on their rights and responsibilities, and also the tenants' rights and responsibilities. So the idea is that we would offer it to everybody. We would send out written notices to publicize the seminar. We can even have city staff work with groups to offer the course to make it fit their needs for ongoing continuing education, but that it's a seminar that should be primarily city-driven and that it would become mandatory. It would kick in only after there was one qualifying call, more than one qualifying call, so two or more qualifying calls, and/or one felony that would count as a qualifying call. It is my understanding that we have a majority to support going to that type of requirement for the seminar. Is there any?
Okay, yeah, since you already have in place.
Go ahead.
The whole certification thing, then, where is that at?
I'm going to get to that.
Okay, that's fine, because that was included.
Sure.
Okay, with the seminar. I just want that understood.
Well, and I want to review that in just a moment, but just so we're clear, I want to make sure that we're clear on, we have support for a voluntary seminar, but it would become mandatory for more than one qualifying call or one felony. Now, when it comes to the license, I just want to make sure everybody is clear. There has been a license, a rental facilities license, in place for 10 years, more than 10 years now?
Since '03, sir.
Right, so, and this comes out of Chapter 197. The changes to 197, then, would have to be made, and so staff is going to prepare some language to bring back to us because the, in order to get a language to bring back to us because the, in order to get a certification for crime-free, you had to take the seminar. So the staff is going to change that language, and I'm looking through my notes, but change the language basically to, I'm not finding my notes, on my notes here.
Or go ahead. Create a form indicating.
Right, so part of the application process, when someone goes to get a rental facilities license, part of that process would be to incorporate a statement that basically says, I understand what my rights and responsibilities are with regard to the crime-free, I'm aware that there's a seminar and, you know, basically saying, I understand what that language is, that they understand what the ordinance is, that if there is a kick-in provision that the seminar would become mandatory, but that you would, along with your rental facilities' license, you would be able to get your certification as a crime-free housing operator just by signing off to say that you understand what the responsibilities are, what the provisions are in the ordinance.
And that's an annual process, correct, John?
Right, which is.
The rental facility license is annual.
It's an annual process.
And that's existing. So that would be how the certification ends up being obtained. Now, the idea is that if you become a chronic nuisance under chapter 95, under what we're trying to change in that, we did have some discussion in terms of, one of the biggest concerns was if I have 600 units in the city and if one of my units has enough qualifying calls to be considered a chronic nuisance and no reasonable steps have been taken because that reasonable steps issue is very important when it comes to whether or not someone's certification, crime-free certification is taken away. We're not talking about taking a rental facilities license away because those are per, by unit. The crime-free housing operator certification would apply to all units. In other words, that crime-free housing operator's certification is not necessarily tied to each unit or each property. It is an across-the-board kind of thing. However, I think it's very important for people to understand that you have to have those three qualifying calls or more and you have to have taken no reasonable steps. So we want to also amend the definition of reasonable steps to make sure that it's very clear what we're talking about. And so in other words, if you look on, under chapter 197 rental facilities, M is defined reasonable steps. We would change, instead of to say proactively and progressively respond to chronic nuisance designation, it would be by the owner to proactively and progressively respond to HPD qualifying calls as defined in chapter 95. So we want to make it real clear that as long as you are working with the police department to address the issues that are coming up in terms of the qualifying calls HPD, only then would you have your crime-free operator's certification denied. So I think it's very important that folks understand that. The other issue that we talked about had to do with apartment complexes and the threshold for qualifying calls. In some discussion with all kinds of folks, it seems that there would be some room for splitting larger and smaller apartment complexes and setting a threshold that would be different. And we were looking at eight qualifying calls for an apartment complex with under 50 units and it would be 12 qualifying calls for an apartment complex with more than 50 units. So I'm throwing that out there to be discussed, but that's something that in discussions that I've had with folks, this seems to be another change that would make sense. The, trying to make sure I go through all these issues.
Appeal.
Right, I just wanted to make sure I was going through. So the, the other issue that I know was of a concern to Mr. Mensner was the appeal, the idea that you would be appealing to the same folks who have violated you in the first place, not violated you, but given you a violation. Those would be, the idea would be, the proposal at least was some kind of appointment of an administrative hearing officer, that that would be something that the mayor and council could appoint in these cases. And I think, when I talked to staff, I think in four, what did you say, last year there were no appeals or?
On the code side, we had no appeals for the last two calendar years, sir.
So this is not something that is going to be keeping people busy, but the point being that folks would not have to be appealing to the same group of folks who were giving them the citation in the first place.
And not meant to be a staff position.
I'm sorry.
And not meant to be a staff position.
Right, it would not be a staff position. Right, it would be a volunteer appointment from the mayor and council. So those are, I think, where we can get to in terms of, if you want to call it a compromise, but there are some definitions that obviously have to be tweaked with what I'm putting out there tonight. The idea being that we will probably not have enough time to get those changes in text for everybody to review by the next meeting, so I'm proposing that we have the vote on March 18th in a special session to give staff enough time to get us a clean copy of the revisions that I've just outlined here tonight and then bringing that back for, we can even discuss it again next week and then have a vote on.
I think that's much smarter, Mayor, instead of, instead of us getting into a situation where we have it on and then we look at it and say, geez, we need to discuss it.
And I know I've just given a lot of information and without having it in writing in front of you, it's hard to make some kind of judgment, but based on what I've said, what kind of feedback is there from the council?
I, very per, Mayor, I, it's the first time I've heard about the multi-unit complexes. I'm wondering if we do it that way or we just say, and I throw it out for thought process for future, on a multi-unit complex, do we say, you know, it has to be three qualifying calls to a unit in that complex?
Well, we looked at that or, or you could even say.
That seems to make more sense to me.
Based on each structure.
Well, you know, if you had a 50-unit complex and you just had, you know, one-fifth of your complexes get one call, you're there. Whereas if you said a unit has to have three, because that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to address a problem tenant.
Sure.
And if one call, we don't describe as a problem for that tenant. It seems to me if that tenant never gets another call, but two or five others, just food for thought. I don't think it's for discussion tonight, but.
But you can argue it the other way.
Oh, I understand.
If a building's poorly run, you might have a call from one unit and a call from another unit if the thing's not managed properly. So you can cut that two different ways.
Yeah, you can because one is only three.
And it's been looked at pretty, it's hard to.
I got you.
I don't think that what's in, what the mayor outlined is a perfect proposal. Either, I wouldn't be the first to say that.
Oh, no, I, I.
But you can cut that.
And I'm not saying that I would disagree with it. That's, that's fine.
It was, it's implicitly and it's easy.
That's fine, no, I'm hearing and there's, I can see both sides of that story. Because one side is you only need three, the other side is you need more than.
Well, it's eight in a large, in a complex, it's 12 in a larger one.
Right. So does that mean?
But what's the cutoff? I mean, you say under 50, where do we get to it being just three?
Well, that's just it. I think that's.
You've got to figure that out.
Got to figure that out.
So that means in a 50-unit complex, you could have eight calls to one specific unit?
No, well, yeah, that does.
I mean, you're not even addressing the problem.
But no, and that shouldn't be that way. If you have three calls to one specific unit, even though you have a 50-unit complex, you got to do something about that unit.
Well, perhaps, that's a, that's a lot.
So that's, I mean, this is, this is good discussion.
You could, you could address the language that way.
Yeah, I mean, you certainly don't want to have.
Three or, yeah, you could have eight for a thing.
Right.
Or three to a particular.
Yeah, you're right. Well, that's why it's good to, that's why it's good to have discourse and discussion.
And the idea though, that somehow a property owner or landlord is going to lose their crime-free operator because someone reaches the threshold.
No.
It's just not true. As long as they're taking appropriate or reasonable steps as defined.
That's the key.
They don't have to worry about.
Right.
So just so I understand it correctly then, if a landlord has an apartment complex of 50 units and they have one unit, it's a bad unit, got a lease, go through the process, let's say they don't even address it, it gets to whatever call volume we set. What happens in the event, I'm not real sure I've gotten a clear answer to this, what happens in the event that the landlord, the property owner doesn't address that specific unit, they lose their certification, their license? I'm still trying to figure out what happens to the other 49 units in that apartment building.
If someone loses their certification as an operator, they would have to designate someone else as, as their operator.
What if they don't?
Then they would be subject to fines and they may lose their rental facility license.
More importantly, which I mentioned very shortly, because this is one concern that was brought up to me and one that I couldn't come up with a good answer to. I will tell you, my concern on the appeal, I looked at as this thing being analogous to other licenses so that you have to have a license to be a plumber, you have to have a license to be an electrician, to be a lawyer, to be a doctor, all those things, and to drive a car, okay? Now, if the licensing agency determines that your license should be revoked.
Because of just complete gross misconduct.
Well, forget this, let's talk about your driver's license or any of these other things. What happens is you have the right to an appeal and that appeal is before an administrative hearing officer is required to give you due process and an independent hearing. An appeal from that is taken to the circuit court. When I started, and so that was how I came up with, we should have a better appeal process. And then when I started thinking about your question, because I had the same question, Kristin, as you know, we've discussed this and it just occurred to me last night, well, under the same theory, what happens to you if you practice plumbing after your license has been revoked? What happens if you practice law after your license has been revoked? For most of us, it's a much easier question to ask, what happens if you drive your car and these gentlemen catch you after your license has been revoked? And my answer to that is, on all three of those things, they're criminal offenses. And so I think we should make this a misdemeanor punishable by incarceration. That would be my answer. That if somebody wanted to take that approach with us and say, you've revoked my license because of what I've done, I appealed it, I had an independent tribunal who upheld it, I appealed that to circuit court, they upheld it, and guess what, I'm going to continue doing it. Then he's charged criminally, we have to create a criminal statute for it and he has jail time facing plus a substantial fine. I don't know how else you do it. That's how they do it with people who, who become police officers, act like a police officer when they're not, who do plumbing without a license, who, they're all punishable criminal offenses, every one of them that I know of. I don't know of any licensing that is in this state, that if you have it revoked and you continue to do it, that isn't a crime. Because I had the same thought, what do you do? And I don't know what else you do because I don't think that you can tell the tenants they have to leave.
Besides the fines and everything, sure.
Yeah, because I mean, what do you do with tenants who have a right to be there, who have a lease?
And like, it's been rare that we've taken a rental facilities license. In all these years, I think we've suspended maybe half dozen.
And what do you do if they continue to rent after we've done it?
We issue citations, we take them to court and, and we work with people to resolve those situations. But I believe the city code and will consult with the attorneys, I believe if you have a code violation that doesn't have a specified fine, then, then it automatically reverts to a misdemeanor violation.
Because it is the same issue. If they decide they're not going to pay the licensing fee or go through that, you have the same issue. You have a unit that we have right now that is not registered and that they're, and that they're leasing and saying, I'm not going to pay the fee and I'm not going to register. And so what do we do under those circumstances? And it's the same question and I think it, it's got to be a misdemeanor. You say, okay, that's your, that's your option.
The only thing I would ask of staff when you bring this back is can you take what currently exists with those two chapters and then redline or somehow otherwise indicate the changes that are being made so that we can see the before and the after?
Yes, we'll present a redline version next week based upon your direction here this evening.
Any other questions or feedback on this issue?
I don't, I mean, I hear what you're saying, direction this evening. I mean, I heard the mayor, you know, states some things that a majority appear to be in favor of or not in favor of, but I don't, you guys should bring, bring back what you want and at some point we'll, we'll look at these redline markups, I'm assuming, and then we'll have additional discussion about those redline changes for the possibility of adoption.
That's I'm assuming.
March 18th. The goal would be to get something by next week. Now, I know because of some schedules with staff, we may not get that information for a discussion next Tuesday, but certainly we'll get it by March 18th.
We're definitely going to try for next Tuesday. It may not be Friday. I talked with Mark Lawyer this morning, but our thought was if we can get it in your hands next Tuesday as a redline version, go through it at a work session where you see the changes, hopefully that gets it positioned to where we can adopt it in their time.
So we can put it on the agenda, but it may not be.
Even if it's late, it's preferable, I think, so we can discuss.
Right, we'll get it to you as soon as we can, but I think a potential scenario is that it comes to you electronically over the weekend or Monday and then we'll have copies here on Tuesday.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thanks. That will be it for our agenda items. We'll move into city administrator comments.
Just, just an update for the public. I think the council's aware of what the weather yesterday, waste management didn't send their crews out to pick up refuse collection, which means that as, as has happened in other weeks during this winter, it'll extend into Saturday to catch up.
We're a day behind for everybody again?
Well, pretty much a day behind, yes.
Well, I mean, should we be putting our trash out on the day or should we wait till the next day?
Well, they have always said, put it out on your normal day just to avoid confusion, but it may sit for a day. If you set it out on Tuesday because that's your regular evening, it may still be sitting out tomorrow.
Well, I just don't want to set it, mine out on Thursday and find out that they actually picked it up when they should have and then it doesn't get picked up.
Right, because some days they're catching up, so, but they definitely said it would go into Saturday.
So put it out and it may or may not be picked up.
Right, we may have trash out there a little bit longer than normal, but they and we understand. That's it for me.
All right. Mr. Mensner, would you like to start with council comments?
I'm sorry, I sort of almost lost my temper tonight. The Hagerstown sons just have a habit of being able to do that with me. You know, if I were, maybe next week we'll discuss it, but given the sons think that they have a lease for 2014, maybe we should be notifying them that it's our intention to renegotiate that lease, but that's not for tonight because I got a little bit too upset to think straight about that. Otherwise, that's it. Thank you.
Penny?
I'm just glad to see that the crime-free housing is moving forward. I think that it's been a long time, so hopefully we can get it done this time.
Well, and I would just point out that we've been very open to getting everybody's perspective and I think in the end we'll have a much better product that will achieve our goals ultimately being to improve housing in neighborhoods in Hagerstown.
Yes, and it has been a mess out there and the snow removal has been horrible and there has been people who are throwing snow into the streets, but I would have to say it's pretty hard not to when you have nowhere to put it, okay? So if any of the police decide that they're going to come by, I don't think there's enough on the street that can do it now. I mean, it has just been horrendous, yeah.
Spring is just around the corner.
I know, and Kristin's babies are in position, so we're looking for, we're looking for, we're looking, we're looking.
What's the magic date?
April 10th.
April 10th, oh, okay.
Which is really about.
But it doesn't matter, we're, you know, we're shooting for that a little bit earlier.
And that time changes this weekend, so spring forward, don't forget. Mr. Munson? Mr. Munson.
With, with regard to the city employees and, and the weather, I mean, I say this almost every week, because there's a snowstorm almost every week. This, in this last snowstorm, last Sunday, Monday, our city employees did their usual great job, including MELP, the police, the people that shove around the snow trying to figure out where it's gone, and everybody else that's out there trying to make life a little better for the rest of us.
You're here, Kristen.
Couple of comments. I was appreciative that we were able to discuss the Suns lease extension this evening in public session rather than closed. I think it clearly indicates that that level of discussion and that transparency with the public, you know, reveals the very discussions we have that really have no bearing, having them in one venue or the other, and clearly allows us the opportunity to communicate more directly with the parties that are affected than not. And the second is, between the doctor appointments and the budget, right now at work, I just wasn't able to make the library function this afternoon. It clearly wasn't a reflection of my feelings at the library, it's just a matter of, there's so many hours in a day, and.
Everybody was wondering why you were not there.
I bet not. But, so, so, you know, I, that's probably the first time I've missed it, you know, since being in public office, and it just.
We thought he was at the hospital.
Some things had, some things had to give. Also, the event last Thursday evening that was conducted by Urban Partners and staff was a good event, it was well-attended, and I think the ability to move about and have that type of discussion and participation was, was a good thing for the folks present to feel like they were engaged in a process rather than being presented to it. And so, you know, I thought that was good.
Mr. Brubaker.
I'll just follow up real quick on, thanks to staff and Urban Partners, and most of all to the people that came out. There were a lot of very good cross-section of folks out and participating in the, the forums that were set up at the Urban Partners thing for downtown, and it, it was a good way to get fresh ideas, I think, it was very encouraging. And, you know, also thanks to the city employees involved in clearing the snow. I know some people had to get into my neighborhood on Monday morning and were able to do so, so. And I drove around a little bit later in the morning and thought things were in pretty good control, so.
Indeed.
Appreciate that. Lots going on, it's an interesting time to be involved in public affairs.
Indeed. I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. Their business awards were last Wednesday, it seems like so long ago, but it was a really very well-attended event. I think over 500 people were there, and some really great businesses were honored, and it was an honor and a privilege to represent the people of Hagerstown there. I also want to congratulate, again, Hagerstown Magazine. We had a 10th anniversary celebration for them last Thursday. I said then, I'll say it again, I think after 10 years, you're an official institution of a community, and so I want to congratulate Kate Rader and the rest of her staff on such a great business and always presenting the community in such a positive light.
In downtown Hagerstown.
And right on the square, they've got some great views up in their, their office space up on the fourth floor. I do also want to thank staff and Urban Partners. I thought the format worked really well. As someone pointed out, not everybody's comfortable getting up in front of 100 people and saying, "This is what I think should happen." And so as I stood in sort of the middle and the periphery of all the four different stations, I heard some really excellent conversations happening, and I think that was the goal, was to really engage folks in the conversation, to give them a voice. And I just want to make sure everybody knows, they can go to the Hagerstown website, hagerstownmd.org backslash downtownideas. Until we get our mind mixer thing set up, there, that is a way that you can contribute your thoughts to what we're trying to do with Urban Partners. And just to remind folks of what the timeline is on that, April 8th, we plan on coming back to the council at a work session to discuss candidate catalyst projects, to get endorsement from the council, and then on June 17th, we'll have a final report from them. And then I just, one last note, wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the constant yield tax rate certification that we received from the state of Maryland that usually indicates that we would need to lower our taxes in order to receive the same amount of revenue that we received last year. In this case, it is basically telling us, we must raise taxes by about seven cents in order to generate the same amount of revenue that we did last year. This is as a result of the 7.8% decrease in the assessable base. That truly is the goal, I believe, of this council, which is to raise the base, so that we do not have to raise taxes. So I think we continue to stay focused on all these efforts that we're undertaking in order to, to basically achieve that one bottom line. And so I just wanted to make sure folks are aware of that, because it will guide many of the very tough budget discussions that we're going to be having this spring.
And that's basically how much poison, much, or more than poison, much as was initially estimated by the state.
Right, when it came out on New Year's Eve, and I'm getting good old, thank goodness for Holly, but she was calling me on New Year's Eve asking me to comment on that, and those numbers are now old.
Those numbers.
They're out the window. Those looked a lot better to us than what this certification says. So just be prepared, it's going to be a very, we're going to have to have a lot of courageous conversations around this table about our budget this spring, and so I just wanted to prepare all the members of the public for that.
Session.
Well, I think we're still trying to catch up.
As I said, it's an interesting time to.
Yeah. All right, and with that, we will be adjourned. Thanks.
Not too much off of.